Good evening. Call this meeting to order. Move to the flag, please.
The state of America, the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as well.
Any roll call, please?
Mr. Boath?
Here.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Farinella?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Penisi?
Here.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Here.
Mrs. Wallack?
Mr. Castillo?
Here.
Mr. Chapman. Thank you. In accordance with the terms of the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was posted in all school buildings, administration building, borough complex office, police headquarters, public library, four newspapers, and tapped into on January 9th, 2020. Please be advised there's no smoking on school grounds inside or outside at any time. Please silence all electronic devices. Pursuant to District Policy 0167, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes duration, and no participant may speak more than once on the same topic. Are there any agenda additions or deletions?
Yes, Mr. Castillo, I have one thing. We have one check to add to the bills list to signs by Lynn for $3,400. This is the final payment for the Tigers that are at Joseph Field. I don't really want to have to spend away another month. She's been very good to us, and she needs to pay her subcontractor.
Okay. Any comments from the public on the proposed resolution? Can I get a motion to approve the prior board minutes and committee minutes?
Motion.
You gonna add that to the agenda?
Yeah.
Are you gonna add that on? Go ahead, add to the bills list. Motion to add.
Second.
Good. Let's vote on that. Can I get a motion? Read that already, discussion? No discussion, roll call.
Mr. Boath?
Yes.
Mr. Boath?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes, on addition.
Mr. Farinella?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallack?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo? Yes, thank you. On to superintendent's report. I missed something?
What did I skip?
The minutes.
Back to that. Resolution to approve prior board minutes and committee minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Mr. Boath?
On the minutes from December 11th, under the grievance hearing, I was not present. On December 18th, on page 14, I recuse myself under the board travel. And on December 18th, on page 9, I voted no on the increment withholding only. I specified that publicly, so if you can, that could be fixed. The attorney also asked what part I was voting no on.
Anyone else? Roll call. Mr. Boath?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Farinella?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Upstain.
Mrs. Wallack?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo? Yes, thank you. Now on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Tonight, we are back on track with our initiative of highlighting a district school each month. This evening, we will have a presentation from the students of the South Plainfield Middle School, so Mr. White, if you wouldn't mind joining us in the front. And we will have a presentation on stop-motion studio video. Are we open here?
Yeah, no, you're fine. Thank you. I'm actually gonna turn it over to Ms. White and the students for the presentation, so if you guys come up this way.
Hi, everyone. My name is Carolyn White, and I am STEM teacher at the South Plainfield Middle School. I have a whole bunch of great students with me tonight, and they're very excited to talk to you about all of the new projects we have completed this year. So without further ado, I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves and take over. Okay?
Hello, I'm Munchy.
Hi, I'm Chase.
I'm Chris.
Hi, Kayla.
Hi, Emily.
I'm Amelia.
As Ms. White said... As Ms. White said, we did some really great projects this year. Some of our favorite projects included designing and creating corn mazes in Minecraft, but other students could try and navigate it. Before working on the project, we researched how corn mazes are grown and cut out. During our coding cycle, we learned how to create a game using block-based coding and JavaScript using microbits. For our engineering cycle, we designed and constructed tabletop miniature golf course holes, competed in miniature golf tournaments. Another project we enjoyed was creating public service announcements using stop-motion animation to increase awareness of digital footprint.
All of the projects that we worked on involve some aspects of science, math, engineering, or technology. They were great for us to see how these skills could be applied in the real world. During the technology cycle, we researched what digital footprints were and how they can impact us. For the project, we created storyboards that were like scripts for the movie. We had to plan our scenes, decide our characters, and write the plot of the story. Once that was complete, we picked out the medium that we used to create the stop-motion animated video. This project was a great way for us to show what we learned without taking a test.
Stop-motion animation is a technique used in film production to create a moving picture from a series of still photographs or images. The process involves using fixed objects that are secured in one position then photographed with a camera. The types of mediums used to create the videos are whiteboards, clay, paper, possible figures, or post notes. We have a video that we're going to show you of some of our public service announcements. We're going to play it for a few minutes, then stop the video and demonstrate how we created them. For those of you that wish to see more of the videos, Mrs. White will start the videos again as we are demonstrating so you can see all the types of mediums that we use.
So the first one, as the kids mentioned, they had different types of mediums. The first one is using a whiteboard. Okay, this one uses clay. Add paper. And the next one uses paper that was drawn by a student in all different forms to be able to show the animation. So I'm gonna stop it and let them demonstrate to you how they use these different types of mediums to create a stop-motion animation. So if anyone would like to get up and walk around and see what they're doing, feel free, they would love to show one.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I still think 300 pictures, tell you that.
I know.
Like 300 pictures for a little, like, little skit. Like, 30 pictures going from all the way over here to down here, so that's pretty much what they're saying. As you're getting a picture, and then it's like the guy just standing there, and then I move it up to it.
Awesome.
And then I go and take another picture, and then as I keep going down, as they play it, it'll look like the guy's moving. See? And then as it goes down. Yeah, so pretty much it's just a background, but you can't see it.
Oh my gosh. That's amazing, right?
Whatever we're doing on it, things are more than words. No stop-motion videos, stop-motion animation.
You're doing great. I know people are watching.
It was like a two-week project, so I think we gotta have like 300 or 400 pictures. So like, I'd be like, it would be like...
All right, so now, really?
Yeah. Not a lot, if you like, think of all of these. I really do, like, one centimeter picture, and then take a picture, move it again, take a picture.
So you're like, walking.
Yeah.
So when you put your whole little video together, you saw your...
Yeah. Just go see the other end.
One letter at a time?
We have four plans, obviously, we've taken four times, four classes.
Oh, right.
Turn the rest of them to the table.
Yeah, it looks like speed racing. You remember speed racing?
I do. I do. Ready? Am I wrong? Do you already do it? How can I select the background? To get for a project, right? How do you choose the background? So when you just... I got it. So our project is... Oh my gosh.
I did a game of...
Motion, pro? Is that what you were thinking? Okay. I want to take it away, but that looks great. That looks great. This one's maybe, we call this... Encourage your reading, but I know. I wanna see this.
So the students will be moving forward. Just so everybody knows, when they did these pictures, they did a minimum of 350 pictures. So 350 pictures to create, so they, it was up here in Saw, they did about 10, 15 tonight. They did 350 to create these pictures, so they did a great job. And we're gonna have a very long show this night.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. That was amazing. That was amazing, wonderful, wonderful. I can't wait to go into the bathroom and see some of your projects. I'm going to ask that Mr. Swisher, if you'll go onto the podium. We also have the report on the district OI from our auditors, Super Cooney, so when you're ready, only good news?
Only good news. So he's helped on increasing like that for the audit, too. So checking it out first next time. We're here to present the comprehensive annual financial report and also the order of management report. Usually, we do this in December each year. If you guys remember last year, we were here in February because the state delayed their numbers. They were late once again this year, but not as late this over here in January to present the audit. And once again, it's go-dos. You have two reports in front of you. The big one is the comprehensive annual financial report, and basically, that's the financial statements that we get from Alex's office, and the main goal of our audit is to render opinion on those financial statements. I'm happy to report that, once again, you guys have received an unqualified opinion, which is the best that you can get, considered a clean audit opinion. The small report is the order of management report. The state of New Jersey asked us to, you know, key in on certain issues like payroll, your purchasing procedures, your student activities, and if we have any comments or recommendations, we would list them in your order of management report. Last year, you did have two recommendations, and those were both corrected in fiscal year 19. And there are no new recommendations in fiscal year 19, so you also have a clean order of management report. So it's a credit to Norrie and Alex and their staff. It was our first year auditing Alex, and sometimes it's a little bit difficult, the new VA, but it went smoothly, and I appreciate all of your help in conducting the audit. And also, financially, the district is in good shape. Page here. The district started the year with $9.8 million in surplus and ended the year with $10.7 million in surplus, so good news all around, clean opinion, financially, you're healthy, good shape for the school district. Are there any specific questions on the cap that anybody has? Debbie? Boy?
I have a question. The referendum projects, do you also audit those? And because it's not part of the big report.
Yeah, no, it is. It's considered in the F-scales of the audit report. It's your capital projects, fine.
Okay, so that's how it was titled, capital. I saw the capital projects, okay.
Yes.
And then my other question is, when, under the bid law, you can bid $29,000, that's under the bidding law. So if a company...
Well, it depends on who you give a qualified purchasing agent or not. You guys do have a qualified purchasing agent here, so your bid threshold's actually $40,000.
Okay, so it's, all right. So if a company comes and bids on different aspects of a proposal, and it's on separate aspects in the one proposal, does that, do they each get looked at separately?
It probably depends on how the bid was written in the first place. I think each example may be different, so I need more specifics.
Okay.
Anyone else? I have a question. In your experience doing this, how often do you see a completely clean audit on a basis?
I'd say maybe, maybe about 40% of the time. And like I said, with turnover and the opposite you guys had over the last couple of years, that's a, that's a good sign.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Couple more things I wanted to go over in my superintendent's report. Reminder that Roosevelt School will be holding their multicultural day on the 31st of this month. Grant School wanted to let us know that the inspectors of the South Plainfield Fire Department will be visiting the Grant School students for the third installment of the fire prevention program on January 24th. Students are expected to watch the online videos at home with their parents and discuss the information that they've learned as a family. A reminder that we have a big wrestling match on Wednesday, May 29th. The South Plainfield Tigers will be wrestling these wrestlers from Old Bridge right here in South Plainfield. All proceeds will benefit the Marisa Tofaro Foundation. This foundation helps children in need throughout the greater Middlesex County area. They have awarded scholarships through the foundation, as well as their main focus of helping families with children who are hospitalized for various illnesses, and granting wishes through the Make-A-Wish Foundation. So if you're able to attend, that would really be great, we would love that. Also, the district is working on a partnership with the South Plainfield Library and Director Linda Hansen to bring targeted elementary grades to the library during the school day to experience all of the resources that our library has to offer. Mrs. Stokoe will be coordinating the program, so we would like to thank the library director for welcoming the partnership, and I will keep you informed as when that's going to happen. Thank you, Mr. Castillo.
Thank you. Moving along to curriculum and certain activities, 1 through 5. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Boath?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Farinella?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallack?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo? Yes. On policy, any motion?
So a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Mr. Boath?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Farinella?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallack?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo? Yes. Okay, we may want personnel, A through D?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Boath?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Farinella?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallack?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo? Yes. We may want to finance, 1 through 15, I believe. Okay, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Mr. Boath?
Under the company that we're going to hire, Tomco and Tomco, from Sparta, I said last week that I was going to Google that firm. I think that $4,000 is very expensive for one principal who we're considering at the high school. I know that we're in search of the best candidate. We have a principal who I believe would be considered as a competitive candidate. I will support the search, but it's still expensive, and I'm sure that according to Mr. Tomco's comments, they will seek comments from staff, teachers, and the community as they break down the applicants.
Anyone else? Can I get a roll call, please? Mr. Boath?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Farinella?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes, abstaining myself.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallack?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo? Yes. Anything we can build any grounds? Any public comments at this time, on any matter? Seeing done, any board member comments? Mr. Boath?
Yes, I attended the CPAC meeting, which was very informative, and the person who handed out his business cards will be a no-cost advocate with a lot of experience. But I do have a question. For students in district that are non-verbal, can modifications or accommodations be made for those students to learn American Sign Language as part of their curriculum? That would be tremendous for these students to be able to communicate with their families for projects they're working on. Would that be a possibility?
We don't offer American Sign Language as a language. It could be considered something as a secondary language, just the same as they take, you know, Spanish or French, so it can be counted as a language. As far as for a special education student, that would be determined between the child study team and the parent and what they felt was best. If they felt that was the best program for the child, then we would supply the child with what they needed. Okay, all right.
Okay, alright, that would be excellent. Thank you. Also, for our co-curricular activities such as DECA and Model UN, I know that for transportation, the students have to fundraise for all those. While these students are out and they get awards and scholarships and, is there a way for the district to share any of these costs for transportation? I know that in other districts, classes such as DECA and Model UN are offered to the students as curriculum. And I believe that their transportation is paid for that way. Is there any way that we would be able to share?
That depends on whatever the, when the principal is planning their budget. If they request it, then we see if it's possible. So if they're planning their budget for next year, they know how many events that these students are going to go to for DECA or for robotics or whatever they're doing. So the principal will then ask, you know, they have a certain amount of money in their budget. They come to us and we plan it this way, and you as the board approve it. So it depends on what they're asking for. You know, we try to accommodate it as best we can, but at some point, we can't accommodate all the requests. So if the principal is asking for it and it's possible to provide additional funds, we do that. But that's really based on the request of the principals.
Okay, and also congratulations to all our seniors who are recognized during the senior nights at the different team events. And I want to thank also Principal Bob Deal for supporting all our students and coming to all these various events. It's a lot of work. I believe that he goes to everything he possibly can as a principal and an educator. So that was really, that's really great to see that. Also, the spelling bee for 4th and 5th grade students. Whether you're in this school district, you live in this district and go to another school, or you're homeschooled, you have to sign up. The event takes place February 5th at the South Plainfield Senior Center at 6 o'clock at night. Thanks.
Any other comments? Mr. Cecilberg?
Thank you, Mr. Casio. First, I want to take, this is my first official chance to commend Dr. Lyschek and Alex Manetti and all their stamp on the excellent audit. I've seen a few, and to jump in that quick and get everything copacetic is like absolutely amazing. And I'm sure it'll keep up like that in the future. I also wanted to congratulate the middle school students who gave us a demonstration tonight. Stop-motion animation and cell animation is a lost art in this world of CGI and computer art and all this. And to understand and use their own toys or whatever they're given to appreciate the concepts of that type of animation, which those of a certain age remember, the old Gumpian Pokis and the Tim Burton movie things and all that. It's nice to see that they're learning a new art that they can take in the future. And finally, I just wanted to announce that the robotics club, the South Plainfield High School Robotics Club is having a pasta dinner at the Elks this Saturday night as a fundraiser. It's from 6 to 9. So if you can make it to support the robotics club, that would be fantastic. And that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Both?
The CPAC board just asked me if I can read this out to everyone. CPAC board would like to thank everyone that attended our January 16th meeting. We invited VOE, council, and other town officials along with parents and staff. CPAC meetings are open to the public unless stated as a parents-only meeting. We appreciate everyone taking time out of their day to experience and meet the Wild Tiger Cafe students as well as their teacher and parents that were there. An opportunity allows these students to learn many life skills as well as being involved in a community and a school. We also like to thank one of our recipients of our scholarship last year who came to speak about her experience with navigating college with an ID. It was a good meeting. I just want to make one comment in regards to Mrs. Boyle's comments about the sign language. As a parent of a child with special needs, it's a parent's responsibility to truly step up and advocate for their child. That parent has also spoken mean many at times, and I want to leave it at that.
Anyone else?
Okay, I just have a couple of things. I just want to commend the students again for their presentation tonight. Not only what they did, but the topic, I feel is very important. And I know everyone here feels the same way. Social media today is not something that these kids fully understand. And it's great that they can see it from their perspective and spread it to their other peers because hearing it from us or their parents, it sometimes is beating the dead horse. And I still have this issue with, not my son, but his friends on Twitter and Instagram and Facebook. And I constantly am reminding them that be careful. You're in college now. You're going to try and seek a job shortly. These things will come back to bite you. So starting at this age, which is middle school age, and getting a grasp on it is very important. I commend you every month for the STEM class for doing that. Also, again, the audit, Alex, Dr. Lyschek, and your predecessors who have sent the tone here for the last three years, getting us to this point. We're a completely clean audit. Who else? Commending.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to executive session where we discuss student matters and attorney-client privileges. No action will be taken. Should be back in what, half hour? 15 minutes.
Have it all.
Right here? Okay, we're back. I get a roll call, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Perrinella?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Panisi?
Little trip, it's not out.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Here.
Mrs. Wolack?
Here.
Mr. Casio?
Here.
Can I get a motion, your adjourned?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
You adjourned?
All in.
All in favor? Good eye.